I'd like to call the Old City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 14th, 2023. We have an invitation tonight by the Associate Minister Rosetta Badgett of Jerusalem Holiness Church, 633 Prince William Street, Reedsville. Reverend Badgett, since we are celebrating the month of Women's History Month, would you mind sending up a few special flowers for us as we celebrate?
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening just to say thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us individually and collectively. We thank you for the opportunity to come together to discuss the different matters of our city, there are decisions to be made, conversations to be had, and we just pray, Lord God, that you will be in the midst of us, we invoke your spirit here this afternoon. We thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon us, and we understand that you breathe in, we breathe out. We understand that all blessings comes from you. We thank you for our leaders, Mayor, the Chamber of, everyone that's involved with the government of our city. We thank you for it, we thank you for all things. Your merciful God, as we understand that we're celebrating women, you made a woman, and that was a good thing. We thank you precious God. All that we undertake to do, pray that it will be pleasing to you, and that you will continue to bless, continue to give understanding, that the right decisions will be made, and we'll give you all the glory and all the honor. In your name we ask the Lord. Amen.
Would we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Captain Seth Durham in the house?
And B. Shift.
And B. Shift. The Reedsville City Council would like to officially recognize the heroic efforts of Captain Seth Durham and B. Shift upon being dispatched to a vehicle fire threatening a residential structure on the morning of January 18th, 2023. Upon learning that an elderly resident with limited mobility lived in the residence, Captain Durham dropped his hose, made entry into the house, and found the occupant in the back bedroom, at which time he carried the occupant to safety. I'm going to choke you up, but, cap. Members of the fire department then evaluated the patient, who received further evaluation from Rockham County EMS, and extinguished the attached carport fire. As stated by Fire Chief David Bracken, due to Captain Durham's quick encephalous life-saving action, the patient did not suffer any injuries from the fire. These actions demonstrate performance above and beyond the call of duty at extreme personal The Reedsville City Council would like to thank Captain Durham and B. Shift for their highly skilled efforts and performance that saved a life, prevented fire injuries, and limited property damage, this 14th day of March, 2023. Cap.
Thank you, Seth. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Thank you. We would appreciate it so much.
Every time.
Captain Durham, you got some of your family with you?
Uh, yes.
You want to introduce, we'd like to?
Uh, sure. That's my mom, and my sister, and then my girlfriend, and then her dad here as well. And then my dad actually is working today. Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Every time that telephone rings, and these gentlemen go out, they put their lives on the line for us. They deserve another big hand. Like Father, like Stu.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would be remiss if we did not also mention that Reverend Badgett was the chaplain of the Reedsville Police Department. I think we have her, uh, we'd like to mention that as well.
And like to mention also that Reverend Badgett is the first black female chaplain, head chaplain of the police department. Next, we've been asked to proclaim, uh, 2023, the Year of the Trail. There are going to be some special events that happen during this time, and we have Quinn Robson here, he's going to give us some information as to what's going to happen, what's going on with this Year of the Trail proclamation.
Mayor, City Councilman, City Manager, everyone, how's everyone doing?
All right, thank you.
So just to share a little bit, so the event, the Year of the Trail, is a partnership with the Planning Committee. So that particular day, we're going to be calling it Bouncing Through the Trails, actually. We have the event going on with the Appearance Commission throughout the park, Cortlandt Park Avenue, and we will be showcasing Sherwood Trail. We will have events going on throughout the park to showcase everything that we have going on. But Bouncing Through the Trail, the event, will consist of almost a color run and a color walk for the kids, for the individuals that would like to come out and participate. Possibly going to start at the end of Sherwood and walk back towards the Cortlandt Park. Planning to have some music and some little snacks and things for those in the event. Okay? Do you have any questions about the event? Yes?
Ms. Robson, give everybody that date.
That date will be June 3rd.
June the 3rd.
Yes. Right now, we're still working on the time for that date. I think the commission already will be from 12 to 3:00. We just want to put a timeframe for the color run, so we can have everybody here on time so they can enjoy it. We will be working with Mark Kennedy to go ahead and create those flyers to put it out for everyone so they can be visited.
And you don't have to be a child, you can be a child apart to do the color run.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right, you're welcome. Jason, please come over and share some more details on what we're running on.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Quinn. Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman, City Manager. Just to add a little bit to what Quinn was talking about, so just in general overview of the Year of the Trail, Governor Cooper proclaimed 2023 the Year of the Trail back in August of 2022. The purpose of the declaration was to just highlight North Carolina as the great Trail State, and the 50th anniversary of the introduction of the North Carolina Trail System Act. And they're asking all the cities and counties across the state to join in and celebrate and highlight their local trails and outdoor recreation, and as they serve as important facilities for recreation, economic development, and planning, and placemaking, and just general quality of life. So they formed the Great Trail State Commission, and they distributed this resolution, and cities all across the state have been partnering in, so we appreciate council support. We're partnering with this coalition. So as far as the partnership with the event, I will be asking the Appearance Commission to partner with them, they have not, we haven't actually voted on that yet. I will ask them to, my department definitely will be, will be working with Parks and Recreation on it. I hope that they will approve that this month. So that's all I have.
We are also tying that in, the June 3rd event with the Cespa Centennial Committee, so we'll be assisting in that as well.
Any questions? This resolution requires a vote, and we have a motion.
Second?
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seem none? Those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
And we got an aye from Teresa Scobie, who's absent tonight, she's at a Main Street convention. Next item on the agenda. Tonight, we're going to have discussion on redistricting issues and consideration of a contract. That's going to be in enclosure one. I got it, I got it. Manager Woodard and Mr. Adam Mitchell III. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And what we have before you tonight is, if you recall, at our retreat earlier, or later last month, we discussed that the city of Reedsville may need to redistrict. So therefore, we have reached out to the attorneys here that did the city of Reedsville redistricting in prior years. So with that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, and Madam Manager. My name is Adam Mitchell, I'm a lawyer at Tharantown Smith in Raleigh, and with me tonight is my colleague Bill Gilkerson. Bill was a longtime member of the nonpartisan staff at the General Assembly, and was involved in redistricting for many years, and since his retirement from the General Assembly has been doing redistricting in private practice. I realized when I drove in tonight that it's been about 12 years since I've been up here, and I was last up here right after the prior 2010 census, and I did serve as the city's redistricting consultant at that time, so I redrew the districts that are currently in place. And 10 years before that, my former law partner, Michael Crowell, who's now retired, drew your districts at that time. So our firm has a long association with the city, and we're glad for the invitation to come back and work with you all this time. So, gonna just, let me give you a roadmap here, we're going to talk a little bit about redistricting and overview and the legal principles that are at play, we're going to talk about the process that we need to undertake, we're going to look at your current districts and make a determination about whether or not redistricting is required, and then we'll talk about some principles of redistricting, and I'll ask them for some feedback from you all, so that when we go back to work on plans to bring back to you, we know what kinds of things to take into account. So, redistricting is based on a constitutional principle, it's called one person, one vote. And what it means is that the relative voting strength of voters should be about the same. And if you have two districts that have true population equality, the voting strength of each voter in that district is the same. If you think about districts that have gotten out of balance, one district has many more people, one district has a lot fewer people, the voters in that smaller district will actually have more relative voting strength, since there are less voters there, and it will take fewer voters essentially to reach a majority, or to come together in a coalition to elect a candidate of their choice. And so, every 10 years, the law requires that we look at the new census data and make a determination. And you need to redistrict if two things are in place. One is that you use true electoral districts in your elections, and you all do, and then we need to look at your current districts with the 2020 census data, and see whether or not they're still in balance or not. For local governments, like city councils, school boards, county commissioners, you get a little bit more leeway than in Congress or the General Assembly, where near true equality is required. What we need to look at is a range of plus or minus 5%. If your districts are within that range, you can leave them alone for 10 years. If they've gone outside of that range, then we need to redistrict, and we're going to look at that in just a second. And I know you all know this, but just for members of the public, and to set the context, you have two electoral districts that each elect two members, and the members need to live in that district in order to run, and they're elected only by members of that district. And then you have two at-large members, and the mayor also is elected at-large. Most jurisdictions redistricted about a year ago, but you all have a unique circumstance, which is that in 2021, only your at-large seats were up. And so, in this coming election, in 2023, your four district seats are up, and so we need to complete the process before that election, so that in that election, we can have our newly balanced districts in place. So how do we do it? There's actually not a whole lot in the law that describes how to do it, but it needs to be done in open public meetings. We think that public input is important, and we recommend holding at least one public hearing before you finalize your plan. We're going to talk tonight about criteria that will guide us in drawing the maps. We will create up to three alternative plans for your consideration, as part of our standard package, we can certainly do more upon request. We'll ask you to work to reach consensus around a preferred plan, and then we'll draw up the resolutions for you to approve them, and we will export the data, the census data, and the shape files that are called, to the board and to your city staff, so that they can have those districts up in place and ready to go. You're responsible for the process, there are no outside entities that are involved. 10 years ago, that was not the case. We, at that point, needed to receive preclearance from the United States Justice Department under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act. That was repealed in intervening years, and so preclearance is not required, there's no one else that needs to approve it and sign off on it, once the council adopts the plan, that is the plan. Like I said, we need to complete the process for this upcoming election. According to the Board of Elections, filing opens for those four seats on July 7th, and so we'll need to finish before then, so that candidates know what district to file for. And that's a comfortable timeline, I would say, I like to have two to four months, and so we should be okay with that timeline. We'll make sure we are. Okay, so let's look at the current districts. You all have two, which is nice and straightforward, we've drawn plans with up to 11 districts, which is a lot to deal with. District A is in yellow, District B is in blue, and you see the geography there on the map. And then what you see in the chart is, under the total population, that is the 2020 census population of those districts, A and B. And you see District A has a population of 6,814, District B, 7,769. The next column is the ideal population, and all that is, since you have two districts, is you take the total population of the city and you divide it by two, that's your ideal district size. Your numerical deviation is about 477 people, District A being too small, and District B being too large, and then the percent deviation is 6.55 in each direction. And if you remember what I said a couple slides ago, the threshold that's allowed under the law is 5%. So you're close-ish, but you're not really close enough, and so, in my view at least, redistricting is required, and that would certainly be my recommendation, that you move forward with that process. You're not radically out of balance, though, sometimes you can see 30%, 40% swings, particularly in some metro areas that have tremendous growth in one part or another. And so we don't have a radical shift that we need to do, we'll talk about different approaches, but you're looking at a few hundred people and a few percentage points to get those districts back into balance. All right, I want to switch now to talk about redistricting criteria, and this is actually what we're going to ask for some feedback on, or some discussion on, after we go through it. And again, these are the kinds of things that we need to know about, we need your input and guidance on, so that we can take that into account in drawing the plans, because technically, hypothetically, there are an unlimited number of redistricting plans you can draw. I mean, we can go census block by census block, but we want to know, what's the big picture? What are you trying to accomplish? What are your priorities? And so, some of those principles, obviously, we, population equality within plus or minus 5% is required. If it's your goal to be at absolute zero, you can say, get it as close as possible. If that's not a priority, that's absolutely fine, we'll make sure we get within that range. One thing that you can do, and we had some folks who were interested in this, and some who said, no thanks, is to consider anticipated growth. And the way that would come into play is that if you knew, based on historical data and trends, that one of your districts was likely to grow a lot faster than the other, you could under-populate that fast-growing district, you still need to be within the plus or minus 5%. And the idea is to kind of give it a little bit of extra room to grow, so that when you get to the next 10-year census, it's hopefully not as out of balance. I'm not sure if that's relevant for you all, or something that you want to consider, but it's just something that you can keep in mind, again, if you have a real distinction in the growth patterns in the different districts in the city. We need to be in compliance with the Voting Rights Act in general, which is to make sure that any voting plan is not racially discriminatory. Contiguity, we want our districts to be contiguous, but we do know that there are satellite areas, and there may be exceptions. We'll certainly, in general, try to attach the satellite areas to the main body of the district that they're closest to. Preserving certain administrative areas, things like voting precincts, if you wanted the central business district, for example, to all be in one district or another, that's feedback that we would want to know, that's something that was important to you. Preserving communities of interest, if they're neighborhoods, or particular parts of the city, particular historical communities that you think should all, should be kept together, that's also something that we would want to know. Physical features, we certainly prefer, all things being equal, to use a major road as a dividing line, as opposed to a small neighborhood road. Railroad tracks, water bodies and the like, if they're those that are important for us to consider, we'd like to know that. I mentioned the post-census development with the growth rates. Compaceness of districts, that's not as big of an issue for you all, since you only, you have the city limits, and then you have two districts, so that's not as big of an issue, sometimes when you're looking more countywide, it's important to people to have districts that are relatively compact, as opposed to kind of sneaking out all over the place. The last two are particularly important, so preserving the cores of existing districts, the way I would describe that is an approach where we start from what we have now, and then we make the changes that we need to make around the margins, as necessary to get within the acceptable range. Or the alternative is, you could say, just start from scratch, bring us three plans that don't take into account what we have now, we want a fresh start, or bring us one plan that looks, you know, that preserves the cores, and one that's a fresh start. That's something that's important for us to know. And then the last is the issue of haring incumbents in the same district, and I guess it's a little different, since you have two folks in each district, but in other words, is it important to you to keep the four incumbents in their current districts? And it's perfectly legal to do so, by the way, that's a valid consideration, it's certainly one that a lot of jurisdictions like, just to sort of keep everyone where they are, and then have the elections and move forward. So, I know I just ran through a lot. So, I'm going to go back to the criteria slides, and I guess first open up the floor to questions, and then we can focus in on some discussion on the criteria, so that we know what to think about moving forward. I appreciate you all bearing with me as I run through that. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Pardon me, I'm dealing, I was, but I'm probably incorrect, I still thought that we were not covered by the Voting Rights Act. There was a court decision, changed that a few years ago, and kept me out.
Yeah, yes. So, okay, so there are two, there are two main parts of the Voting Rights Act, there's Section 5, and there's Section 2. Section 5 is the preclearance provision, that's the one I mentioned, where before a covered entity, which you were, made any change in voting, even as small as moving the location of a polling place, you needed to essentially get permission from the United States Justice Department to do that. And so we did that for redistricting 10 years ago, and of course, we got that permission. That part has been overturned by the United States Supreme Court, so there's no such thing as preclearance, we do not need to submit your plan to the Justice Department. Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act basically just says that no jurisdiction shall adopt racially discriminatory policies or practices. It's something that is enforced, or would be enforced by a private party. So if someone felt like we were going about redistricting in a discriminatory fashion, somebody could file a lawsuit under Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which is still on the books. So that's the part that is still up.
Could you give an example of setting up lines in a discriminatory fashion?
So, just trying to think of some hypothetical numbers in my head, and maybe we don't even need to think about numbers, but if you, let's say you have an African-American voting community that's relatively compact, and has the ability to elect a candidate of their choice, be that a black representative or not, but the chosen representative of that community. If we were to intentionally split that, so that half of those folks were here, half of those folks were there, you basically have two non, you would have two non-minority districts, where that community that was able to elect a candidate of their choice no longer can. So that's an example, if you follow. Good question.
Have a word about deciding if you were a juror man.
Right.
Situation.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I have one. We are only off, and of course, forgive my math, but it should be right around 955 people that are out of proportion with the line of the district ring. So less than 1,000. And you do what you need to do in the future, and we're hoping for a lot of big growth, some patio homes, you know, hopefully 50, 60, whatever, and everything. So that would really throw us off. You do your job, and let's say, four years down the road, that gives us an increase of 1,000 extra residents in that. So we come back, we would have to redo this all over again, because we would not be in that threshold.
Well, so you don't have to do it all over again until the next census.
That, okay, that's what I need to know.
So you wouldn't have to redistrict. You could have thousands and thousands of people move into one district, and you'd still be in compliance with the law, because really, only, only the official census data is what matters. But what I was trying to explain before is that if you know that 1,000 people are coming into District A, maybe we should make that a little bit smaller to account for that growth to absorb it. Not, we don't have to, it's not required, but then when we get to that 20, 30 census, we may not be quite as out of balance as we were. But again, I want to be clear, redistricting is only triggered by the federal decennial census, or annexations or exclusions can come into play.
Thank you very much.
So, as far as the criteria, I would say that the most specific guidance we need is on the issue of preserving the cores of existing districts or not, the issue of pairing incumbents in the same district, and are you interested in accounting for future growth? And really, that would require that, that you sort of know what the future growth is going to look like. We wouldn't want to just guess. So I would say those are the three distinct pieces of feedback that I would ask if you can come to consensus on tonight. That way, the next time we come before you, we can have, we can have three plans for you to look at. And the other, the other thing, because you only have two districts, and we know we need to move people from the blue to the yellow, if there are specific areas along that border that you think would be good opportunities to look at, let us know that as well. Otherwise, we'll, we'll obviously bring back various scenarios, but we would certainly be welcome to that, to that feedback. So cores of existing districts, pairing incumbents, future growth, and then are there any specific areas you'd like for us to look at?
I want for the districts to be very similar to what they are right now, in reference to population.
I like to be, that they preserve the core of existing districts.
All right, I'm hearing consensus on, guidance on, let's start from where we are and make the changes we need to make. Okay? Issue of keeping incumbents in their current districts.
I like my name is Fickers Water.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are you interested in exploring the future growth issue, or just let that be?
Well, if we knew the supply chain, we'd be a lot better off, but right now, I'd say that would be kind of a gamble.
Well, other than we do, we're going to be bound for 10 years.
Correct, yes, sir.
I think being coming on us to consider the growth area, we've already identified some areas we think is going to be impacted pretty significantly in the next couple of years. I think maybe working without planning, partly giving some insights, there is, would you think it would be wise, Mayor, to consider those areas if we know it's going to be?
Well, since we're going to have three different scenarios, I think we could, yeah, I think we could do that.
I think part of your time would be very helpful, I believe.
Okay.
Mayor, you think it's?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we are expecting growth in the yellow section over there around Mark Street, but at the same time, we have changed zoning in the blue section along the freeway drop and near the middle school for apartments, so they can still balance out themselves.
Well, how about, we will consult with your staff, and if we think that there's a plan that makes sense, that accounts for future growth, we'll bring it to you. And if we sit down with staff and it turns out that we think growth is going to be evenly spread, then we'll just scrap that and just bring you three plans that don't look at that. Is that fair?
You mentioned moving some blue into yellow.
Right.
If it could resemble what's already in yellow, if that makes sense. The areas that you.
Right. Are there any specific areas that, so, for example, there's all this population in here, there's some population up here, down there, are there, are there any areas that you think lend themselves to a fairly straightforward change? We'll certainly look ourselves and bring back various scenarios, but if there is any guidance.
Just want to be able to see.
Got it.
Now, if you plan about around, if we have a crew, Tom Hope is going to be involved in around the truck, truck terminal out there, the department, that's, we're looking at like 200 departments, that's probably 400 or so people out there, we know it's going to be back in the early future.
So, well, there are no specific thoughts on that, and I know we're putting a lot up at one time. I feel like I have what we need, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, to start drawing plans and bringing them back for your consideration.
In terms of the, you heard some interest in a plan that would consider growth if we find from your staff that that would be there. Would you want to do that in just one of the three plans that we bring to you and not look at that in the other plans, or?
Because that's something that's not necessarily going to come true, maybe. Just one thing.
Just one claim. Thank you. Also, if you, I would, because you want to consider the, you want to avoid pairing the incumbents or putting the incumbents out of the district that they're in, I would appreciate a, an official list of the addresses of all the incumbents, because I have to know where you, where you live. But, thank you.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, we'll see you in, see you in a month. We, yes, ma'am.
You talked a little bit about railroads and roadways, how does that affect the district?
Well, so the idea is just that if, if we have to draw a line somewhere, and we have a major road as opposed to a neighborhood road, where you're going to have half of the people on a block in District A and half in District B, we prefer to use the major road. Similar railroad tracks, for example, can just be a natural dividing line, but they don't have to be. And so those, and we'll look at those, and generally, if we have to draw a line, we're going to try to draw it on a major road as opposed to a minor.
Mayor, what is that? I think I'm correct, we have a few streets, one side of the street is A and one side is B. If there's a way to avoid that, I would like to see that avoided.
Right, and that's, that's, I mean, you're, the line's going to have to be somewhere, but to make it in a way that's as minimally intrusive to the neighbors and such, we would want to, we'd want to do that. We can, just as far as public information, because like I said, I do think it's important for this to be an open and transparent process, we have in other places, and we certainly can here, work with staff to create almost like a landing page on your website, where we can put the three plans up there for folks to look at, and people can sort of look at the layers and stuff. Would you like us to do that? And would you like us to do that before you all see, in advance of the next meeting? Or would you like us to wait until after the next meeting and you've had a chance to see the plans?
I would.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we will, we will have three plans for your consideration, and we'll be ready after that meeting upon your direction to make them publicly available. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor Council, we may, we could also have a motion for the contract for Darrington Smith Services.
We have a motion to, our Darrington Smith. We got a motion at the second? End of discussion. See none? Those in favor? Raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay.
And then? Send the budget amendments. And Mayor Council, also there's a budget ordinance amendment attached as well, we can get a motion to approve that budget amendment.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the budget amendment.
So moved.
Second.
End of discussion. See none? Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next item on the agenda, consideration of agreement with Paul Redd, Old North State League of for naming rights for Field Number Three at J.C. Park, enclosure two, Hayward Cloud Assistant City Manager of Community Services, and Reggie Allred with the Old North State League.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mayor and Manager. This was an item we discussed at your annual retreat last month, and if you recall, Mr. Allred did a PowerPoint presentation of how this thing would work if you all considered naming rights to J.C. Field Three, which included some renovation, which included lights, bleachers, all those other things, excuse me, all those things that he explained. That is in your package, I'm sure you've looked over it again. And so, if you recall, the manager asked you all, said we were going to come back with this at your April meeting, and here we are. And so, Alec Allred, Reggie Allred's son, who's his partner with Old North State League, is here to answer any questions you all may have, not only about the presentation, but any questions that maybe you come up with since the presentation. So he'll be, he'll be stepping forward shortly to answer any questions for you all to consider that proposal.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, thank you all for letting me be here today. I'm here to answer any questions. I'm the president of the Old North State League and the principal owner of Ballard. My dad and I started this entire venture together in 2018. Since then, there's been other partners brought in, but my family owns majority. And so, I'm here to answer any questions that anybody might have on the proposal.
We ended this, we, what is the limit of this? How long is the week being effective? I did not see that either.
Tell me, we talked about doing it for the rest of our length of our term for the rental of the field. So I believe that contract runs out in 2040, so coinciding with that contract, to keep everything equal and even, with everything expiring the same day.
So this contract will run from this year through 24?
Yeah, which is when our agreement with the city ends for the actual facility itself.
And if I may, it's July 31st, 2041.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And I have a question.
Please, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Councilmember. On the issues as far as the activities for the naming rights, you have six issues here, and they're listed A, B, C, D, E, F. Is that the priority that they would be, if you did get naming rights for this and the money that's established that comes in from that, is that the way we would go down the line? Or is, are they just there and then you get the naming rights and then decide which is most important?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, obviously, priority would be get the naming rights first, but I think the important thing is we get the lights fixed. I think that's the priority to bring the, the safety issue with the players themselves. I mean, balls are, balls are leaving bats at 100-plus miles an hour, so being able to have night games would be a greater, better thing for the players, but also better for the community to get more people out there in the evenings after work. I know when the previous town manager, Preston, was in office, one of his big things that he wanted to do was bring colleges down from the Northeast for spring tournaments, to have more, all these teams staying in hotels for the economic revenue. So I believe that those next few bullet points that would go into the dugouts and the stadium seating and the press box, I think those all allow those, those other revenue opportunities to happen in our offseason for the city. But the priority, I think, first and foremost, number A, is fix the lights, and then the rest of it, is bring it to a legit college baseball playing facility, to be able to attract better players for the luckies, but also be able to attract more revenue streams for the city as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
Is that me?
Yes.
I think this is an excellent way for us to get the first-class stadium that we need. However, will the city be consulted before a final decision about who gets the naming rights is made?
I couldn't hear that last part. Was she saying that, would y'all get, y'all have to get permission on who would take the name?
Would we be made aware of who's going?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have another question?
I guess I do. He would. On the 1A, bad lighting, you can take a look at that, please.
No, I've got.
We would get professional lighting installed, cable lighting to the college baseball field. That seems a little ambiguous to me. I don't, who judges what is? We give you total control of what is done right or not, and you get the revenue from selling the name rights.
Correct.
So what control do we have, what, how you spend your money, I guess is what I'm trying to add.
I think that would be, I think that you guys could have control over that by introducing us to the contractors that you would like us to use for certain projects, and there having, being some communication there. For example, Mr. Waterman with all the lights, he's very highly qualified in determining what a safe quality of lights would be for anybody, but especially college baseball. I think that's, that's how we could, we could do that.
This is a MOU, would there be a contract brought up at some point in time?
There would be a contract brought up with the company that we sell the naming rights to, so.
What contract would you?
Yeah, well, see, what we will have to do is more than life, is we'll have to hire a firm to go out and sell the naming rights. We don't have, I don't have the staff, nor do I have the knowledge. For example, the High Point Rockers, their stadium naming rights was $21 million over a 10-year period. I don't know anybody that has access to money of that caliber. And I'm not saying that this, the facility at J.C. would attract that type of money, but regardless... money, but regardless, the, the expertise in stadium naming rights proposals I don't have, and you, you normally have to hire a firm, and I believe that's where the contract would come from.
I guess I'm just a little bit troubled with giving you the rights to do it, and with no control of how you spend money. It'll be your facility for all factors and purposes to, to sell, to market, and do whatever you choose to do with it. But then, the income, I'm concerned about, we don't have control of how the income is gonna be fixed. Does that make sense?
No, it makes, that definitely makes perfect sense. I understand that. It, I think that there's, I don't know that there's one great way to do it. It's, it's kind of either, A, somebody on either party comes up with half a million dollars to do it, do the facility, or B, we sell the naming rights. And from there, one party has to assume the expenses of hiring a firm to do the naming rights, to, to actually go out and sell the naming rights, I believe.
Let me ask you, attorney, something. Would that be something that you need to be put in a contract with the highest funding that we have?
You're gonna have to have a contract eventually.
So, we will have opportunity to pass on the contract?
Based on what, based on what's in front of me right now, you got a lease. That's it.
Do what?
You got a lease, and that's it. So, I mean, you're, that's giving, giving them the rights for 20 years to use the facility, basically.
But the naming rights is what I'm.
And I'm not, and now, what I'm saying is, that would be a sep, that's separate from what's in here, and you would certainly, and that's why everybody's here, and what I understand is to discuss the, the naming rights. At some point, there's gotta be a contract, and then to, to address that.
Contract between him and the person leasing, but I'm concerned about holding the city from the, I could go on the city.
I mean, that's, that's something that I think that, that this gentleman reaching out to his, whatever firm he's talking about, that's between them.
Thank you.
All, all we've got here is a lease. What he's talking about is apples and oranges to, to the city leasing in the park for 20 years.
Mr. Feser, I do, I understand what you're saying, though, because there is no, there is no oversight. I could collect the revenue and theoretically do whatever I want, but that's your, that's your concern. I do think that there's a way to establish a contract to protect the city from that, but I also would like everyone to keep in mind, we don't, we won't own the stadium. We're here for two months in the summer. Those improvements to that field are what they are for the city for the rest of, long after, long after I'm gone, long after the team's gone, and hopefully the team's here for another 30 years. But those are things that the city will own, not the reasonable Luckies. It's just, I think those are things that need to happen for the city to get the first class stadium that they're hoping for, and for the reasonable Luckies to attract better and better players, to provide more family-friendly entertainment on, on a grander scale for the city.
So, let me just add this, that while it may sound a little bit harsh, I've had to have to spend a good bit of time with Alex this afternoon, and I'm convinced he wants to do the right thing. I don't say this to be a name, but I want to make sure the city is always protected. Thank you. Thank you, Alex, and, and enjoy.
Any other questions? I think we're looking at this situation in good faith, efforts to enhance the field that we already have, to make it a whole lot safer place, place to play, and to be a, a drawing card for others to come. Got a little faith in you two, I believe you're gonna do the right thing.
Thank you.
Alright, we need a motion at this point to allow the naming rights to be gathered by the Old North State.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Council, free vote, ask a legal question.
Yes.
Thank you. Alec, when you, if, if the council does give you permission tonight to move forward with seeking naming rights, before any contracts or anything were signed, would you bring those to the city to review?
Yeah, absolutely.
That was where I think our attorney needs to come in at as well, before, to me, this would be just, in, in my thought, this is giving you permission with the Old North State to go out and seek that firm to get permission to sell the naming rights, and your firm would draft up what that contract would look like between the three of us, correct?
That's correct. That's my understanding as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Those in favor? Raise your right hand. Good. It's unanimous.
Thank you. Chris Ed.
Next, we have consideration of the J.C. Ballpark concession stand proposal, enclosure three. Hayward Cloud, Assistant City Manager of Community Services, at our service.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, again. This was also an item we talked about at, at your retreat. If you all recall, these, the bid on the concession stand traditionally been a three-year contract. And so, this one ran out in 2021. Of course, we had COVID and all those things going on, so the person who was, who had won the bid, did work all the way, worked the concession stand all the way up to 2021, and that has since expired, and so it's time to open up for bid again. As we spoke about at the, at the, at your retreat, the agreement that we had with the bid winner in 2018, our previous manager looked at doing some type of percentage, revenue percentage with the bid winner to, in an attempt to try and, again, the same thing that Alec mentioned about bringing people in, getting things done, and trying to get as much done as we can in terms of people coming out to the facility. As, as you can see in, in the memo I prepared for you, back in 2015, the, the bid winner won with a $600 bid. And so, as we talked about at the meeting, I think it's cleaner for, to ask for a minimum bid, so we're not running to trying to collect, you know, revenue from the people that are, that are running the concession stand. It was hard for us to track, it was kind of a, a gentleman or gentlewoman's agreement, and so, we just had to take whatever they brought up and said, took their word for it, what was sold. So we thought we should revert back to the 2015 agreement where we just asked for a minimum bid. So after speaking with Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, Chris Phillips, I asked him what he thought would be an appropriate bid, you know, from the last time we did that, and he added 25% on and said that he think a minimum bid of $750 would be appropriate. And so, that's what we are asking now, and ask for your consideration. Before you vote, she may say something about it, but the one question that Councilwoman Scora asked all about was equipment inside of the concession stand, and whether or not it was ours. And so, the answer to that question is, yes, the equipment in there is ours. The hot dog machine, fountain machine, maybe. But we're willing to let people bring, if they have something extra like a nacho machine or, or whatever they want to do, if they got the contract to bring that equipment into it. But that equipment in there currently is ours.
Any questions?
Question is, this is given, the right to operate any event at the day you build, they would have a right, not just the ballgame, but any, any event at the day you build, they would have a right to operate, is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. What generally happens is, let's say for instance, the, the baseball field, the Luckies, the college camp, they can work that, but we also work out an agreement where they communicate with our Parks and Recreation Department for our, our league games, and so we can let them know that we have games this day, and so they can come out and earn money for that as well.
Mr. Cloud, just for the record, looking at the bid process, this is for a three-year lease with an additional two-year if everything works out with both parties. It would be, look on the next page, accepting bids?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
23, yes.
Alright, I'd just like to put that on the record so people know.
And as she said, there's also, with the help of Mayor City Kirk, we show what the, what the ad would look like, and as soon as you all vote for that, we will get that in the paper.
What is the city's responsibility regards to equipment in the concession stand?
It's, it's ours, and so we ask that they, you know, clean, keep everything clean. We go in occasionally to make sure everything's still in order and that they do not, you know, break it.
We have to pay for repairs, I would assume.
Yes. But to my knowledge, there haven't been any issues, because the, the type of things that they're fixing in there are pretty, you know, basic. Nobody's frying food or, you know, gas over anything like that, I mean, gas or grease, so it's pretty standard.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I have, I'm having a hard time hearing, but I do have a question. It's $750 yearly, would that cover any expenses we have at this length of water, mobility insurance, plumbing, etc., etc.?
Y- yes. What was difficult about, I know that was, and I'm glad you brought that up, that was another question you all asked, what does it cost to actually run that facility? And so, what we have is, our Duke Energy Bill at J.C. Park, it doesn't break out the lighting at the concession stand. It includes all the lights out there, the stadium lights, the, the lights at the tennis court, and those new lights that we put out in the parking lot. So it's difficult to, there is no way for us to break, break out just the concession power, power of bill, so that's what that 25% includes inflation, as well as what Assistant Manager Phillips thought was a fair, fair price for a minimum bid.
Thank you. I just, I'd just like to say thank you for making sure they have their own insurances to cover any incidents or, or losses.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
One final question. We get the bid on May 26th, does that give advantage of time to get ready for the season?
Well, I know of, there's several people that have already asked, so we're gonna get some pretty quickly, and I'm, and I'm thinking we could possibly move that stuff up. This was just an example to use to show you how everything would be laid out. So if you all vote to do this, I will work with the staff to get those things moved up so we can be ready.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion on the Ballpark concession stand proposal?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? End of discussion. See none, those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Consideration of meter tap increase, enclosure four, Josh Beck, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Several times last year, we were receiving notices from our suppliers of fee increases. The latest one was at the end of February of 10%. So we evaluated the cost of several meters. So just so you guys are aware, anything over a one inch, we charge parts plus overhead, so we don't provide a set fee. So what I have before you is the two meters that we do provide a set fee, three-quarter and one inch, which is the most common that we provide for a single-family house, irrigation, obviously a large retail store, something would be much larger than that, Farmia is great at that, so. But as I've shown in the chart on your memo there, you can see that fee breakdown. Currently, we are still using the 15, 16 numbers, and so you can see at the bottom, currently today, we're charging $1,300 for a three-quarter inch meter. And so, that costs the city, each time we perform this service, approximately $700 we're losing. So the, the total cost that we expect it to cost us for a three-quarter, and of course, we're averaging this, okay? So we're looking at, you know, assumed that a certain right-of-way width, and so on some of these, we expect to make a little bit more, and some of these, we expect to honestly probably barely break even. Because the right-of-way has changed, so the length of the line that we have to run from one side of the street to the other, depending on what side that service is in, all plays a factor. So we try to look at multiple scenarios and come up with a good average that we felt. So for the three-quarter inch, basically, we're looking at $2,020, and for the one inch, $2,250. So we are proposing a three-quarter inch tap to the, to increase to $2,200, and a two, a one inch to increase to $2,400. And that's simply to, to give us a little bit of a buffer. I don't want to have to come back two months later and say, hey, it's me again, and, you know, it's increased yet again, and now we need to increase this. So, but we are continuing to get feedback from our vendors that pricing is continuing to increase, so put that little bit of pad, not to try to make money on anyone. This is just the service that I think the city should continue to provide. A lot of larger municipalities don't provide this service anymore, but I think our guys do a better job than if we just hired a random contractor, so it protects the integrity of our system a little bit more than just someone who's getting paid to do it. So, that's the fees that I have before you, and be happy to answer any questions.
I assume you're proposing this is taken back immediately or the funding approved?
Yes, sir. Again, the city, as I mentioned, we're losing between $700 and $900 bucks every time we do this. So, again, as you look there, for example, we're, we're barely covering the roadway repair and the meter, much less any of the parts and the labor of, of water and sewer that actually perform the job. So, yes, I would, I would ask that it take time to meet.
Mr. Beck?
Yes, ma'am.
You don't have anything scheduled like this for tomorrow, do you?
No.
Okay. I would hate to do it tonight and then somebody have it done tomorrow.
No, no, we, we have several larger ones in the works. We've got several projects obviously ongoing, but anybody that's obviously already signed an application, we would hold that price, but we don't have any currently queued up that we're aware of.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
At what point, and who decides what size the meter tap is, three-quarter inch or one inch, and when is that decided?
So the applicant decides that, depending on what their needs are for their flow determines the size that, that we provide. Obviously, a single-family home is, is almost always a three-quarter, but depending on the architect and engineer on, say, a lot of projects such as Cookout or whatever, they tell us the size meter that they require for the, the fixture count in that facility.
Did you hear that? Any other questions? Can we get a motion for the meter tap?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I feel we, I feel Mr. Doc, that's the question for meter tap fees.
Okay, motion? End of discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Consideration of engine replacement for fire truck, enclosure five, David Pratt, Chief, Fire Chief.
You're the Mr. Mayor, City Council Members' Manager, Woodruff. I bring before you this evening, there's further discussion on a matter that we discussed at your annual retreat, and we talked about our 2014 area ladder trucks. About two months ago, we began to have some performance issues with the ladder truck. Upon evaluation, we found out that it was using excessive oil. We even have found oil in the radiator, and there were other performance issues as well, so we carried to the manufacturer of the engine. When Grings were, upon analysis, they stated the fact that we needed to do a rebuild of the engine or a complete engine replacement. As we discussed it in the retreat, to rebuild the engine is about $36,400, which only comes with a warranty on the parts. Full replacement is about $48,400, but with the fluids and the radiator flushed, it comes to about $50,000. Uh, full replacement is about $48,400, but with the fluids and the radiator flushed, it comes to about $50,000. And currently, we, you know, we don't have the funds to do a full engine replacement in our current operating budget. So that's why I'm here tonight to just request funding for, um, as we discussed, I think many of you had alluded to the fact that we'd rather see a, a new engine put in, which would prolong the life of the truck, uh, out beyond 2029 and further into the future. Uh, so that's before you, for your consideration this evening. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions? Is there a motion for the engine replacement in the ladder truck?
Seven.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Issue announced.
Thank you.
Let's get a new meeting.
No new bodies either.
Next on the agenda, consideration of bids for construction of penthouse C D B G dash C B project. Enclosure six, Ms. Judy Yarber. Penthouse Management.
We've got it. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Manager Woodard. Um, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the bids that we received for the penthouse project. As you know, um, I'm sure you all know, this is a very passionate project for me. Um, I have been waiting a long time for us to be able to expand that facility. This project will mean great things for us in a lot of different aspects. One, from an economic development standpoint, because, you know, about 80% of the, uh, events that we do currently at the house come from outside Rockinham County. So this will certainly increase that, which will increase the number of heads and beds at hotels and motels. When us being able to seat 250 people, um, at a sit-down dinner, there's not another place around here at the time in Rockinham County that can accommodate that. Um, you know, we have to go to Zion, thank you very much if they allow us to do that, for our city event. So, um, it's something that's greatly needed. So we have, um, Assistant City Manager, Chris Phillips, helped us outline what we needed here for this. The bids on this project did come in higher than what we thought. Um, the lowest bid was 1,497,430. Um, there are some additional amenities that they have added that we do not, um, at this time, don't foresee us needing at all. The only additional would be the 5,000 for the wood trim. Um, some of the quotes that came in, and they should have been in your packet of information, but I've got them here if you need anything. But some of the quotes that came in for the amenities like landscaping, um, patio lights and those kind of things were much higher than if we tried to do them ourselves. So we just felt like they were not needed, that we could handle that, um, ourselves. But as far as the wood trim, we would want that inside the facility. Um, one of the things is, you know, this COVID grant that we received was held up for quite a while on the state level, um, with the state historic preservation and with COVID and everything else. So it was a three-year grant, and, um, we have to have the contract signed by March the 17th, or we stand to lose the $600,000 grant. Um, we have asked our grant administrator, she has in queue for us, because technically, the grant should have been completed, um, by June, and we know that that is not going to happen. But she has in queue for us, if it is approved tonight, for us to, um, do an immediate extension on the amount of time that we have for the grant, you know, for the construction to take, to take place. She does feel that, um, if we made a contract and we're moving forward, that they would grant that. Um, so the additional amount of money that's needed to complete this project is right around 750,000, which, um, as based on your memo, would come out of the general, um, fund. And Chris has really outlined what that does, um, to the fund balance and so forth in the memo.
And Mayor, Council, if I may, um, to be sure, I'd be glad to speak with her as well. Um, sitting through this process, you know, this is a really unique opportunity that the city was awarded, you know, to be able to get 600,000 in grant funding. And we would certainly hate to lose that. Um, we did put 400,000, the City Council did, out of our American Rescue Funds towards this project. However, as we all know, inflation and unfortunately, the timing of this project, the bids have come in higher. Um, but, you know, this is a project that I do feel like the city is very passionate about. And I think this is one where you have a unique opportunity, where we do have 600,000 in grant funding. And if we want to do it now, I think it's going to be cheaper to do it now than to sit here and put ourselves down the road five years from now, when it comes back double what we could have had it. So I know that 750 is, is a large, still to swallow, please don't get me wrong, we certainly don't take that lightly. But even with that percentage, if we move forward with that allocation of fund balance, that's still 57% of the grant that would be grant funded for this project. So the city's contribution would be 43%. So this project as a whole would still suffice for grant funding more than city funding. But again, just some degree to consider, just trying to think long-term, and the unique possibility this would place us and to be able to have conferences, such as the conference maybe that Councilmember Stogel's at, a Main Street conference, it really could propel us in a unique situation. I just would hate to see this go by, just because I would not want anyone to sit around this table and say, we, we had the opportunity and now it's three times that amount even then.
Some of those light years ahead of everybody else in Rockinham County that led to random nerds too.
Absolutely. And I will say that when we first looked at this project several years ago, um, we got a, um, Charlie Hall had come to give us a, a guesstimate on what he thought it would be at that time. And that was with the metal structure, not quite as large. It was the bid, I mean, what his thoughts then were, around $900,000. So you can see in that amount of time how much it has gone up. It's just, just keeps going up every day.
Ms. Yarber, just for me personally, looking at the bids, um, and I, I know what patio string lights are, but the tree lighting, what, what is tree lighting? There's a big discrepancy in the bids that came out. We had a 43,100 bid, and then we had a 19,000 bid. So what, what is the tree lighting?
So you know, at the house, um, we currently have, um, uplighting on our columns, on the trees and that kind of thing. So that's what that is. So it would basically be the landscaping they put in with that bid, and then putting the uplighting on that. I will tell you that I have done the uplighting out there at the house, and we do a little bit more every year. But I guess all in all, I had maybe spent $9,000 on that. So I thought we could do that for a lot less expensive than what was being quoted here. Um, the patio string lights, um, was also another one. We did our own patio string lights out there. Danny came and put up the poles for us, he ran the lights for us, and I bet that cost us $800.
Wow.
And if you see these prices, it's very expensive, yes.
So in other words, Mr. Yat needs a raise?
Yes, he probably does. I'm more than one scale.
Yeah, a question. Brooks, uh, Brooks Construction, is that a greenware company?
It is a greenware company.
Did you have any new contract that's planned to have to be completed, when, when we're starting and completing?
Yes, sir. In the contract, it will be 183 days, um, which is right at six months and some odd days.
Is there film clause in that?
Uh, yes, there is. Yes, sir. And they have the contract, again, ready to go if that's what council decides.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion on budget ordinance amendment number 14?
Mayor. Because this is the closest we've ever come to achieving this dream, I make the motion that we approve budget amendment for the number 14.
We have a motion, is that second? Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Issue announced.
Thank you so very much.
I believe we also need to approve the, um, other two. The, uh.
Community development grant?
Yeah, and as well as the, um, cap, uh, special revenue ones.
Do we have to do those separately?
It may be a point prior, yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion for the, the, the community development grant?
So moved.
Motion.
Some type of amendment is, thank you.
All right. Any discussion? See, none. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Issue announced. Special Grant Revenue Ordinance Amendment. Do we have a motion? Motion.
Second.
Second by Mayor Proten. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Announced.
Do we need to approve the bid? Um, the first thing is for the BOA, but.
It needs to be the bid as well.
Do we need to accept the bid?
Do we have a motion to accept the bid?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, any discussion? See, none. Those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Issue announced.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, consideration of amendments to boards, to the board and commission membership references in the city code of ordinance. Enclosure seven, Jason Hall, planning and community development director and manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, City Manager. Now, this is another retreat item that we brought before you last month. Um, we discussed some ways to improve and clarify the language regarding, uh, appointing board member attendance in the code of ordinances, just to clarify our policy, both board member attendance. Uh, this includes the planning board, the board of adjustment, historic preservation commission, appearance commission, parks and rec commission, and the human relations commission. Uh, the, the intent here was to, um, just clarify, the, the ordinance itself is very general, and it does have the attendance policy, um, in place. However, we, we thought that adding some specific language regarding, uh, quorum attend, and attendance would, would help us. Because regu, regular member attendance is very important, um, especially when it deals with property and land use of planning board or with appearance commission getting projects done, or anywhere in between with any of these boards. Uh, we put together some language to add to this section of the code, being if a member is unable to attend a scheduled meeting, it shall be the responsibility of the board or commission member to promptly notify applicable staff prior to the meeting date. In the event a quorum is not obtainable, the absence will be listed on the mayor's attendance record. That meaning that if all the board members call in in advance, and we're basically sitting there like we can't even have even a meeting, we can't even discuss things, that it would be noted on their record that that meeting was canceled. So it's a brief addition, but I think it will be effective in, in defining our, our policy. And, uh, I recommend that council adopts this.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Does a member meet the requirement to contend by computer or whether by electronic means that we do quite often?
Typically, that, that applies to council. Um, that has not applied to the appointed boards. Uh, that, that's applied in most case, in, since COVID has ended in most cases to, uh, council only, not to the appointed boards. Uh, if that's something y'all would like to extend, then we, we could, could do that.
Just our remote participation policies, technically, for the council.
I was gonna ask, you know, like, someone gets injured and has to be missed a couple of weeks because of a battle, uh, knee, whatever. Uh, is that excused if they do, can they contend, it's not no excuse for them?
No, the ordinance isn't including the language for excused absences. Uh, it's just, it's an absence or it's an audit as it's written.
For example, there was a time when I was on the planning board, and because of school events, I, I missed the three meetings. And there was nothing I could do but miss the meetings and be present at my, at my job. I was taking off planning.
I would like to insert that council is probably aware that we've made it fairly easy for them to be reinstated, um, you know.
Yeah, they absolutely, the ordinance provides, I'm sorry to jump in, Angel, the ordinance allows them the ability to appeal to council. They can come back before you if they ha, if they missed through a personal emergency, they can come back before council and appeal the expulsion from the board, and y'all have the right to reappoint them.
And Mayor, I may put you on the spot, Jason. There's one committee that, um, how many meetings did we miss because we didn't have a quorum?
I believe we had three meetings of the appearance commission last year.
Right. And that's all we had, because there was never enough of a quorum. And, you know, people called in 15 minutes before the meeting was supposed to start. And, you know, we can't get anything done unless the people fulfill their obligations that they've signed up to do. So.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Thank you.
Well, we need to vote on all four of the views that are coming together.
I think because they involve the commissions and committees and whatnot, we vote just one motion. It's the same, it's the same language.
Can we get a, a vote or a motion on the code of ordinance section to be amended?
Mayor, I make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Issue announced. Next, we have public comments. Do we have anyone who'd like to make some public comments on tonight? Come on up and give us your name and address.
Mayor, City Councilmen and Women, and, um, uh, City Manager, so have they have you. I am Dr. Jappal in Chestnut. I live at 450 West Morehead Street. I am the president for Indigo Creek Townhouses. And I'm here because we have a situation which has been brought to my attention, may be the cause, because I can't tell you for sure, from the water main break that what that happened on West Morehead Street across from that particular area. And if I may, I'd like to show you how this hole has continued to, is underneath the road and could potentially have come and come from, um, the water main break that went on for quite some time. And so we're asking your permission to.
Sorry, we lost it.
Like me.
Some of us old people are not quite technology-inclined. I'm talking about me. And I didn't want to take you back there. Um, you know, there's several situations here, but I did have a contractor. They, um, came out today and, um, looked at it and gave us an estimate, and they feel certain that there is more water under that road. Right now, it is a hazard. Uh, we do know that we have a creek problem, which, uh, potentially could be a, a problem in terms of environmental, not just for us, but, uh, other homes and, um, apartments around there. So we're asking your assistance in taking a look at it and to see if that was part of the problem. Thank you.
How long has that, how long has that opened there?
Couple of weeks. Not long at all. And it's growing. I take pictures every week of how it has progressed. And then there's another area right beside it that I didn't show you that is doing the same thing, right by that hour. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll look at it and give you.
Thank you.
So, then here we go. Mr. Beck, do you care to get her contact information so we can call? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Say anyone else? Say anyone else who has come in tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'd like to start off the report with some personnel changes. The first one I have, we're very excited for. The city of Rudesville has contracted with Sanford Holzhauer's Economic Development Consulting to conduct an executive search for the city's next economic development director. In addition to this contract, the city contracted with Mac Williams, who is with his firm to serve as bridge management for the city until we fill this position for the economic development director. And with that, I would like Mr. Williams to come forward and I'd like our city council and our public to formally meet Mr. Mac Williams. Would you like to say a few words, Mr.?
Well, thank you, Ms. Manager, Mayor, Manager, Mayor, Council. I am Mac Williams. The firm Sanford Holzhauer is pleased to have this engagement with you. I knew Jeff long before he was here. And so, I knew what he kind of did here and kept up with. In fact, I came and played golf with him at Penrose about a year ago. So, it was a very nice day with him. I have had experience in Rockingham County. I was the first economic development director for the county back in 1980, I think it was four. And I was here till 1989, started the committee of 100, built the spec building at Tella's now. And that may be a sore subject to hear. But nevertheless, I had great experience here, lived in Rudesville on Green Street for about two years. So, this is kind of like coming back home a little bit for me. And I was delighted to get this opportunity. The staff here, the manager and all the other staff that I've been introduced to, been very accommodating. I'm all set up. I've got the computer set up and email address in the office and at home so I can keep up with things going on. I'll be here one day a week physically, but I'll be on call all other times. You never know what's going to happen when the phone rings or when you turn on the computer. In economic development, it can be anything. And we've already had a couple of interesting things occur. And I'm glad I'm here to help fill in for the position while we're going to be looking for someone. And on that note, we're getting started at the end of this month with some colleagues of mine from Sanford Holzhauer coming in. We're meeting with Summer and her team to talk about that job. What we, you need to look for, better to find the job so that we can then go out and look and try to find the best person to fill that job and take them through that process so that we can have a candidate that you're going to end up with that you're going to like and who's going to like being here. And so, I'm delighted to be doing both of these things and happy to meet with any of you all individually, if you have anything you want to talk about. And again, I'm very pleased with my start so far and the work with the staff here have been very nice. And a lot of commendation for how they've gone about the process of getting us on board and getting us started. So, thank you very much. I'm glad to be able to put a name and a face with each of you and you a name and a face with me. And so, thank you for the opportunity to be here.
And we also have Ms. Drew Piccolo, who is with us tonight. She is our new city planner in the community development department. She came to the city on February 20th as a recent graduate of UNC Greensboro, where she obtained her master's degree in sustainability and environment with a concentration in regional planning and development. Ms. Piccolo, would you like to say a few words?
That's unexpected. Thank you so much for having me. I'm very excited to join the city of Rudesville. I'm relatively new to the area. We moved here last year because we just kind of love the city. My husband has roots here. So, I'm very happy to be a part of the city and to hopefully make some changes and some differences in the future going forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
We have also hired Maurice Brothers, who's joined the team of Rudesville as our new wastewater treatment plant superintendent. He comes to us with an extensive background in wastewater treatment and he spent the last four years with the city of Gaston as the operator in responsible charge. And he was not able to be with us tonight. And then one final announcement with personnel. We have also hired Elaine Ratcliffe, who will be joining the human resources department on Monday, March 20th, as our new HR analyst. And she brings 22 years of experience to this position, of which 14 of those years have been in local government in Orange County and Davidson County. A couple of updates for projects and city updates. The annual North Carolina League of Menace Valleys Conference City Vision will be Tuesday, April the 25th through Thursday, April 27th at the Endacy Suites in Concord, North Carolina. I believe most of you who are going to be attending have made arrangements with registration and hotel. Also, the Sesquicentennial Open House for City Hall will be Saturday, March 25th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Unfortunately, due to the weather delays, the ribbon cutting scheduled for the all-inclusive park has been postponed. But please just note, please come out because we will have a celebration here for our open house. We'll have the touch of truck events and food trucks. So, we will have a nice celebration here that day. We just will have to schedule our ribbon cutting for the park at a later date. Also, city staff is looking into the process to have a sister city. We have preliminary information, but we'll have additional information after April 11th city council. Also, I'm very happy to announce our bus stop shelters. Staff have installed the legs and supports on five of the bus stop shelters. And we've got several already located. We've got the one at Pellicle Works and we've got the one right out here at the library. We are working with the chamber and our city marketer, G D R. Broer, to schedule a ribbon cutting. It'll probably be later in April, but we'll get that date set for you guys. And then, final announcement, our street scape project. The street scape project is finally getting near completion. A vast majority of the concrete curving and sidewalks are now complete. All the smaller light holes are installed and we're currently waiting on the arrival of four large high struc holes that will be installed at the mid-block crossing. Starting last week, our fiber contractor was on site and began pulling fiber from the police department into the new poles. Once their work is completed, Brady will provide the necessary wiring and begin the installation of new cameras and Wi-Fi. Bits have also been received on the milling and paving work. And staff will begin coordinating with the contractor to determine their availability and coordinate future road closures with emergencies. We're also working on securing the crate myrtles now instead of waiting till fall. Since our project will be completed on schedule, we are comfortable moving forward to plant those this spring. And with that, that completes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Before we move to council members' reports, somehow I missed the agenda. We could back up to that. There are two items. Approval of the February 14th regular meeting minutes and approval of the 2023 council retreat minutes, February 29th through 22, 2022. They don't want to have one of those pulled. If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Apologize for leaving that out. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I heard that on the Compton Drive. Insert right of the border square.
Are you traveling on us?
No, I lost connection, so it's not that you can't believe it. I did hear you.
Okay.
Sorry.
You're good. You're good. We needed that. Council members' reports, starting with Councilwoman Pro.
Mayor, if I may do a part of my time, we have Star here from the Chamber of Commerce. And I know she would really like to get out of here. So, if I may do a part of my time and let her go first with the chamber update. Well, thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, I've got two pages signed, y'all. Thank you again. All right, upcoming events, it's going to be at Casino Night, which will be this coming up Friday night, March 17th to 6/11. And that's also going to be at the Rudesville Elks Lodge. Then the Rudesville Night with Greensboro Swallow on March 24th. Topics at 12, N C E O C cessation planning. And that's on March 28th and 12/1, it will be at the chamber. Topics at 12, CPR workshop. Will also be at the chamber on April 20th and 12/1. The staff appreciation, April 26th, location is to be announced. The Rudesville Night at the Greensboro Grasshoppers, May the 12th. And the Chamber Night with the Rudesville Lucky is on May the 20th. Upcoming ribbon cuttings. The Fellowship Club of Rudesville, March 16th. And that's going to be at 1711 Penrose Drive. The CrossFit Lucky City, March 27th at 12. And that's at 211 South Scale Street. And the Countywide Ribbon Cutting for Health Incorporated, Family One Justice Center, Countywide, March 31st from 11 to 1. And that's going to be in their new location at 317 Cherokee Camp Road in Wentworth. Tri-State Steel Retail Store on April 12th at 9:00 a.m. And that's going to be at its new location at 2513 Richardson Drive. The New Farm Bureau, April 24th at 12. And that's staff appreciation to follow. And that's going to be at 1917 Freeway Drive. And City Store, April 25th of 2023 at 12, at 1623 Way Street. And Destinate Magazine, May the 16th. And that will be at the Rudesville Chamber. The Used Power Sports LLC, May the 22nd at 12, at 1906 Freeway Drive. And Wheezy's Bakery, July 31st. And that's also going to be at the chamber at 12 o'clock. And our new members is CrossFit Lucky City, Grove Vintage and Winery, Friends of Eden Animal Rescue, Honey CPR and Safety Solutions, the Fellowship Club of Rudesville, Kyle's Construction and Crutchfield Acres of LLC. And our April Coffee and Connections will be hosted by Workforce Unlimited, April 6th, at the Rudesville Chamber from 9 to 11, 9 to 10, excuse me, 9 to 10.
Thank you, Star.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council members.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. This has been a very, very busy month, even though part of it was short. It looks like I've attended 13 to 14 events. So, I won't bore you with some of the things, but I will give you the highlights. Several things that I went to, one of the highlights was in February, the 27th, along with other council members, went to the NC State League Dinner in Raleigh, where we solicited funds for our representative hurdle. And then, let's see, March the got to back up here. On February the 23rd, I attended the ABC Board meeting. And March the 2nd, the ABC Board met again and voted unanimously to close the store on Diesel Drive. One of the ribbon cuttings, which was absolutely wonderful, was the Disability Advocacy Center. And those people, they're absolutely wonderful. They were, they were just radiant and happy and just, it was a great, great ribbon cutting. I did watch from the comfort of my home, the Rams basketball playoff. It, we wish it could have been better, but it was still good. And I did not attend that, but I did watch at home on television. One of the highlights for me personally this month was I was fortunate enough to reach through the Brian Series at Guilford College to meet Jose Andre. If you have never heard of him, please Google him. He has been to actually North Carolina. He is a chef who has restaurants, Michelin restaurants all over the world. But when there's a catastrophe, he's gone to where the earthquakes have been. He's just came back from Ukraine. He said his father taught him to, every Sunday. He didn't know how many people were coming for dinner. And of course, the mother would get very upset, are we having five people or are we having 15 people? Those of you who cook understand that. But he said it doesn't matter. It's about the fellowship and if there's more people that come, you just throw more rice in. Jose has fed over 1 billion people all over the world. And it's during catastrophe times and hurricane, just everything. But please Google him. And like I said, it was a very, very emotional and very highlight of the whole life for me. So, I do appreciate that opportunity. And Mayor, that concludes my reports and I'll turn in the rest of the time to the city clerk.
Yeah, Proten.
Mayor, who was councilman, I've only got just a couple of things. On February 19th, I attended the Black History Program sponsored by the McLauren Neighborhood Association. On February 20th, I attended the city council budget retreats, on the 20th and 21st. And on March 6th, I attended the McLauren Neighborhood Association meeting. Also retired.
Okay, thank you. I attended the March Rockingham County NAACP virtual meeting. Attended the Human Relations Commission meeting. And also attended the March 7th McLaurin Neighborhood Watch, Community Watch meeting. Attended the March 7th Rudesville Senior High New Football Stadium groundbreaking ceremony that had the Carol out of Panthers involved and other donors from Rockingham County, as well as the city, our city. And also, I attended the Reed Rams State Basketball Championship Playoff. I was in Chapel Hill this past Saturday. And so, that was my report.
Councilwoman, please.
Mine is not as exciting as Councilwoman Walker. But I did attend some meetings this month. I would like to say before I start how the city looks wonderful with all the improvements that they've made. And I'd like to thank everybody in the city for what they've done. I attended the city council retreat, budget retreat. I also participated in the NLC reception and we had a lot of fun. Then we participated, also attended the groundbreaking Rudesville High School football field ceremony. The disability advocacy ribbon cutting that was held at the chamber. And participated in the community treasure program this month. It's all happening.
Excellent question. Thank you, Mayor. My report to now is very exciting. I live in pretty dull lot. There were early comments regarding the high school basketball team. If you would allow me to pick up on that, just a reminder that our team went 26 and 1, nothing to be ashamed of. We're the mid-state 2A regular season champions. The mid-state 2A conference champions. 2A west regional champions. 2A basketball state runner-up. We only fell one game short, so I think that's very commendable. I think the athletes made us proud and we have much to be proud of and look forward to the team. A lot of placement and talk more on it, so we expect our good things next year. If you allow me to give one other shout out. In my neighborhood, in my area, the south end of town, Council Walker's area too also, there's a couple that walks almost every day picking up trash. And they carry a bag with them. And I had a conversation with them. They told me that the only days they didn't do that was when it was raining. If you notice the area around the high school, it's much better because of their involvement. I don't have permission to use their name, I guess they would give it to me. But they did give me their address, so if you're listening tonight, folks, we appreciate what you do. You live in 1816 South Park Drive. It's a couple and they're certainly be commendable for what they do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my report.
I'm going to forego my report and pass it in to Angela as we go to close session. I want to say that I had an opportunity to attend all but maybe four of those 27 games that we played this year. that we played this year. I have a granddaughter who wants to make every one, but we didn't make them all. We missed perhaps four of those games. Those young men who played on their basketball team were some of the toughest, roughest, most skilled players I've ever seen in my life. And they deserve a big pat on the back if you have an opportunity to say that. I know they feel bad because I felt bad for them. Went all the way, but we just didn't cross that bridge. But like Councilman Fesner said, we have a nucleus of freshmen and sophomores and juniors on their team that'll be coming back. So I think we'll be back next year bigger, better, and stronger than we were this year. And we'll have more confidence and a whole lot more experience than what we had this year. So if you happen to see one of the Rudesville basketball players or their parents, because their parents, and or teachers, a coach, who happened to be Coach of the Year for the 2A group, give them a big pat on the back. They need to hold their heads up high because they did more than most. And I also want to say that I celebrate the women. Here it is, Women's History Month. We need to celebrate our ladies, celebrate the ladies who own council, the very first female city manager for Rudesville, all of those who are in our workforce, all of those who do large things and small things for the Rudesville community and the young. We celebrate you. We love you, we respect you. Before I cry. Yes. Teresa, I left off the consent agenda that I was about to leave you off to.
With your permission, I thank you for your comments you just made, but I'd like to, I'll turn in my report into Angela because I'm having a hard time hearing you. So with your permission, I'll sign off.
Now, we're going into closed session. Do you want to join us?
I'll do my best to hear you, so I'll go keep you off.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We're gonna move to the first floor conference room for a closed session to discuss a legal matter, real issue to NCGS 143-318, 11, 8, 3, and 5. We need a motion to do so. A move. Those in favor? Mr. Adams, we will not be returning to the chamber.